Sorry.
Manny, you're not coming?
He's on Zoom. Call to order, the meeting of the Salem School Committee of November 18th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227. You can also join via Zoom using the link posted in the meeting agenda. We have three members currently participating remotely, so we will be taking all votes by roll call vote. And our first order of business is approval of the agenda.
A motion will approve.
Second.
Under discussion, seeing none, I'll now call the roll. Member Campbell?
Yeah.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
And myself, Dominic, yes. That motion was made by Member Cornell and seconded by Member Manning. Public comment, the Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public School students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Hi, my name is Derek Papallegas. My daughter Olivia is a sixth grader at the Salt and Stall School, and I wanted to kind of give my thoughts of the proposal to close the middle school. So I want to express my wholehearted support of this move. My daughter loves Salt and Stall, but it's been clear that there are things that the students are missing at Salt and Stall, that they just cannot be provided. My daughter is a sixth grader, and she moved from Witchcraft in third grade. She has an IEP, and she's in the language-based program. So while we love Salt and Stall, we didn't choose Salt and Stall. And so I know there are people that are taking into considerations kind of the anxiety and unknowns that come with a school move. And I can say that from my own and my daughter's experience, she moved in the middle of third grade from Witchcraft, where my wife is a teacher, so it's even more of a kind of a homegrown kind of community there. Right after COVID, middle of the year, you know, right after, right after winter break, she had to move to a new school and to, not just a new school, but to a new program, right, into the language-based. And so we were super, super scared. We were so worried. The day she moved, that day, she was in. She, she just got in and so great, and she got so accustomed. And so I want to kind of, I know those fears are coming from some parents, and I can say firsthand that kids are resilient, and my daughter is very resilient, and she made that transfer very well. And so I think certain things that Salt and Stall cannot provide are provided here. I came into this not in favor of this, and I listened to Dr. Jreiki present his thoughts, and also we have some family members that go here, and it's clear that they're missing out, right? We have this auditorium at Salt and Stall, there's not a school play. The band is much bigger here, they're marching around and doing all these other things. There's intramural sports and all these things. So I really, I hope that you guys really consider making this move for the students. And I please hope that we talk about losing out on the kind of the middle school, like the environment and the, in the atmosphere, please do it right away. We're talking about a small school, and if you segregate those students out, you're talking about seventh grade and an eighth grade. What's going to look like when you have one eighth grade that's kind of hanging on at Salt and Stall and everyone's here? It's even more of a situation that we don't want to get into. And lastly, I want to say, as a parent of a daughter in the special needs, like I said, she's in the language-based program, we did not choose Salt and Stall. We love Salt and Stall, but I think this is in the best interest of my daughter. But I also like to consider that all those language-based students that attend Salt and Stall, you know, we, it's been acknowledged by the superintendent, by other committee members here, that they're not getting the full experience at Salt and Stall. So for those on IEP that didn't choose that, what are the legal ramifications that you've acknowledged that they're not getting the most out of middle school? And you, but if you don't make this move, you're sticking them in a middle school that, from the leadership of the school committee, has acknowledged that they're not getting the full atmosphere and experience that they need. So I urge you to please do this and do this right away. So thank you.
Thank you. If you don't mind, you're invited to sign your name to the signup list, you're not required to.
Okay.
For the record. Any further public comment in the chambers? Seeing none, is there a public comment online from Zoom? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the school committee meeting of November 4th, and the special school committee meeting of November 4th, and the warrants of November 7th and November 14th. Moved by Member Manning, seconded by Member Cornell. Roll call vote, Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Hoffman? Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Manning? Member Campbell? Member Campbell?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay.
Do not hear it the first time.
And myself, Dominic, yes, the matter carries. Next item on our agenda is superintendent's report.
Do you want to take the student rep?
Yeah, do you want, we'll take out of order the student representative's report?
Sure. Today, at the superintendent advisory meeting, the sophomore president for the class talked about how he's meeting with Glenn Burns to discuss phones at lunch being allowed instead of being banned as they were at the beginning of the year, and he's working on a survey to send out to students and teachers. We also discussed the movement of the graduation at the Commons and is said to move it to Bertram Field and have a better access for the graduation. And we are also holding elections for representatives from each school. They won't hold like actual power, but it's just a representative from each school to talk about what's happening from New Liberty, Salem Prep, and one from Salem High, just in the group. And that's the majority of what we talked about.
Any questions from the members, first representative, Member Manning?
Just do you, when you referenced the, was it the sophomore, you, who did you say at the beginning?
The sophomore president.
Yeah, do you, do you have a name for that, for him?
That was Finn Billings.
Okay, thank you.
Member Cornell?
I just have a question about the phones. We have a couple of high school parents here. Believe it or not, I occasionally get texted from a phone at the high school. So like, the phones are out at some points during the day. I'm not accusing my child of anything. However.
This is a public meeting member.
Like, she's at a soccer game. So she, so like, I guess my question is like, is this really, how much of an issue is this really that people feel like they don't have the kind of like, because I think it's, it's giving people the maturity and the, you know, the trust, right, to like use their phones at times where it's appropriate? So is that, I feel like that's happening a little bit anyway, is it?
So right now, we have phones banned just outright during the day. And last year, we had it so that phones are only allowed during lunch. And we want it back, like a majority of people want it back because having it gone for the whole day is kind of, it's more of a sense of where we can't communicate with anyone else, right? And so a lot of people in the group talked about problems where they can't reach home, like they can't call like a parent or like a sibling or like any relative at all or guardian. But it's, I think that's the biggest case in that where, as in, your daughter can still like talk, but like, obviously like.
It may not even be her, it might be someone else.
Maybe just someone else.
Unclear, yeah.
But it's still like not allowed, which is sad because you should be able to talk to your parents like in the way you usually do, just like for 30 minutes a day, you know, which is just how long lunch is. But that's mainly the reason where we're at.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Further questions? All right, we'll move to superintendent's report, item five.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. I just want to start with a few comments, and then we'll get into the meat of the agenda. I do want to start by just expressing my gratitude to the staff in the Salem Public Schools. As we head into Thanksgiving, we're lucky to have the, the folks that we do working on behalf of our kids. I, I'm just reminded of the incredible Thanksgiving feast we had here, and I do see one of the organizers in the audience here. But to see so many staff come from Collins in this case, who were here on their own volition, serving food, make, I guess making food too, is a pretty heartwarming thing to see. And I, I did notice today, a teacher on my way in this morning had put outside of her door, or their door, a list of every one of the almost 90 children that they work with and what they're grateful about that child. And I, I, one of the children had stopped and found, I saw him stop, find his name on the list and say, "My teacher thinks I'm funny and I have a lot of energy." And I think, I, that's just a reminder that we have like amazing people. Tonight, there was an ML parent night, which was organized by Andre Fonseca and his, but and his team, and we recognize 100 students who are, you know, became formerly MLs. They've, they've become proficient in English. And eight students from Bentley were, were given certificates for gaining full proficiency in Spanish as well. And these, these ML nights, if you've never been, are just amazing turnouts of families. But it's really driven by staff who reach out and who insist that every one of their kids and families come, and they certainly wouldn't come if they didn't feel the connections they do to our staff. So on this Thanksgiving, I know we're still a week and a half away, but we don't have another meeting before then, so I just want to express my gratitude to our team. I do also want to call, there's a lot of things happening. I think my, I don't think I have an open night for the next three weeks. It's, it's all good things. There's, like this week alone, there was the LPAC family night. But on Wednesday, there's an IEP, a meeting about the new IEP process and building strong school partnerships that is run, will be run by Jen Dusset Lee and her team at Collins Middle School from 6:00 to 7:30. That's really important that families have an opportunity to learn about the new IEP process. On Tuesday evening, our family engagement facilitators are running an event about the new report cards, or our report cards on Aspen, how to decode them and answer questions that families might have from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Community Life Center. Again, on, oh, it's Tuesday, November 26th, which is not this Tuesday, it's a week from Tuesday, my bad. And that's upcoming. And then, of course, we, Thursday, there's a public meeting to discuss visioning of the new Salem High School. And anybody's invited to come, to be part of the audience, but we'll be talking about building, bold and innovative ideas about the design of the new building as we're getting, it's exciting, we're rolling up our sleeves around the, this incoming new building. And then after Thanksgiving, there's three different nights where we're going to get input from the community around the new high school building project. And one of the critical decisions points is whether the city is interested in building a grade seven to 12 or grade nine to 12 facility. November 25th, December 3rd, 25th at Salem High, the 3rd at Salt and Stall, and the 5th, December 5th is on Zoom. We will also be hosting a staff-only session so that we can hear from Salem Public Schools' staff. So a lot is happening, but all good stuff around the future of our school system. With that, I am going to, we, I think we've decided to table the technology plan update, is that right, Mayor?
Yep, it's your report.
Okay, so it's my report, yep. And then the mid, I did want to turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Pauli to give a mid-course budget update like we did last year, to give you a sense of where, how we were trending. We knew it was going to be a tighter budget year, we don't have as much flexibility without the ESER COVID relief funds. And so, and we obviously negotiated the contract after the budget was settled, but we wanted Elizabeth to give us an update on, or Ms. Pauli to give us an update on where we are, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
Great, well, thanks. And I, I wonder if you will advance the slides? Perfect, thank you so much. Well, let's jump in, Mark, and go right to our mid-year slash first part of the year financial update. So just as a reminder, our approved appropriation from the City of Salem is $74,592,616. That is a 4.83% increase, which is a larger increase than we've had certainly in the last decade. Chapter 70, which is the state funding, is about 40% of our appropriation, and so that makes the City of Salem our largest funder. So we are continually grateful for our partnership with the City of Salem. Now, if you took a good look at these materials that were posted on the city's website or in the materials that were sent to the school committee, you might have seen a typo which was, it is not here on this screen, but in your materials, it is there, which had the personnel at 59 million, but the non-personnel was 2 million. I was missing a digit, it's actually 20 million. So apologies for that, I did catch that this afternoon. Our expenses add up to more than 74 million, so the last reminder I would offer on this slide is that we are using over $5 million in other funds to offset our, our expenses this year. Some of that is recurring money that we get every year, like Circuit Breaker, like School Choice, and some of that was one-time money that we had to use. So we did go into this year knowing that we were spending above our appropriation. Next slide, please. So where are we now? You know the fiscal year starts July 1st, but a lot of our expenses don't start until late August, September. So I can say, and if you have access to this graphic that, in a way that is closer than what is on the screen, you can see that we're about 33% spent this year. That includes money that we have actually spent and money that we have encumbered in purchase orders. So we've set it aside because we know what we want to spend it on. And that's about where we were in the last couple of years and about where we would expect to be at this point in the year. Anything that we're seeing now that is money that was budgeted in the wrong line or expenses have changed radically, we're planning to come back to you in January for a suite of transfers, but for now, we're just keeping an eye on where the money is and what the expenses are. So in the graphic that you have, the available money is the big gray box, that is $50 million. The encumbered money, meaning it's held up in a purchase order because we know what we want to spend it on, is about $7 million, that's the orange stripe. And the year-to-date expended is $17,452,562. So the message here is that we look like previous years. Now, if we look deeper at our personnel and non-personnel expenses, for personnel, we have expended about 22.4% of our budget. This was as of Friday. That is less, obviously, than the third of the way through the year, but remember, three quarters of our staff start at the end of August and September. So that's when our personnel costs really begin. Also, and I'll reference this later, as you all know, we were delighted to come to an agreement, a collective bargaining agreement with our two largest unions, and so the new rates will be on the December 6th paycheck, and the retro to the beginning of the year will be on the next paycheck. So we're a little below where we might expect to be, but that's because we haven't yet adjusted, made those adjustments. Non-personnel, we look to be about 70% spent, and before that makes anyone very nervous, please recall that a large part of that is this year, we have been very intentional about trying to open year-long purchase orders. So anything we know, like we're going to spend a million dollars on, we just opened the purchase order in September, and then it looks like that money is all spent. It will be by June, but, but that is planful. In previous years, we haven't had purchase orders for our utilities, for example, and so those, that wouldn't look like it was expended. So while this looks like a high number, it doesn't yet appear to be a panic-worthy number. Next slide, please. This is what it looks like for schools, and the 20.7% personnel that has been expended so far, I think that is a reflection of our school-based staff starting in September and their salary adjustments not yet applied. On the non-personnel, I do believe the 69.4% is the phenomenon that I just referenced, which is anything they know they're going to spend all year long, we've opened purchase orders for those. Also, we do a fair bit of back-to-school spending, so there are some lines that are completely spent, but we knew that was going to happen. The example I often give is the things that our IT department buys, they buy for back-to-school, and so most of their money, non-personnel money, is spent very early in the school year. Okay, next slide, please. Oh, thanks. So wanted to dig a little bit more into some budget areas and lines that we often worry a lot about, and one of those is special education tuition. So this year, we budgeted $5.9 million using general fund money and Circuit Breaker money. We had, as of November 1, 46 students in out-of-district placements and seven students awaiting placement. We also were able to charge, remember when I said we offset the money? We were able to charge about $1.2 million at the end of the last school year to prepay tuition and to cover transportation and summer costs. And we still have about $600,000 in Circuit Breaker. So while this line is always a worry because we never know who is going to move in to Salem throughout the year, and we're delighted when they do because we welcome all comers, it does make it hard to predict our budget. But right now, we look to be about where we expected to be in our budget planning process. So there's, this is one that we monitor constantly because the expenses are significant and the numbers can change over the course of the year.
Member Manning?
Do you know, offhand, the seven students awaiting placement, are they awaiting placement because there are no spots available for the program that they need, or are they not determined yet what they need and they're in the pipeline of the IPs? Just, just roughly.
I'm not 100% sure. Do you, yeah. But someone here will know.
I thought so, hiding in the corner.
Hi, so we have a variety of students and reasons of why they're waiting placement. Some of the students, they've moved into our district and they're too far away to go to the schools that they were going to previously, so now we're looking for schools that are near, closer to Salem. And some of them, we, we knew that they needed to be placed this year, and we're looking for programs that would be appropriate for them. So there's a couple of different reasons why kids are waiting for a placement.
Okay, so it's not a case of the programs are all full?
No, it is not, no. We still have, we still have room in some of our, our sub-separate placements, but they are getting pretty full, so.
Right, but I mean, the out-of-districts, are they all, it's not?
It's a variety, there, there are some that are full, there are some where our kids are on waiting lists for very specific programs for their disability.
Okay.
And there's some that, you know, kids have aged out of the program that they might be in, and they're waiting for a new placement in other, in other schools.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll be watching this closely as the year goes on, as our partners in the Special Education Department always are, you know, on a daily basis, watching it closely, but we'll be watching it from a financial perspective closely. Next slide. So next, in the category of lines that we watch very closely is transportation. I did just want to start by noting that last year, we brought routing in-house for our regular-day transportation as a way of both serving students and families better and maximizing efficiencies. And it looks like we are succeeding in maximizing efficiencies for sure, and hopefully serving families better as part of that. We have reduced the number of, of large buses. We used to have 14, and now we have 13. This year, we have 15, 1,510 students riding 13 big buses. For comparison, in '22, '23, we had 1474 students riding big buses on 13 big buses, but the year before, we had 1374 on 14. So we had fewer kids on more buses. So I do think our investment in bringing routing in-house has really helped us to maximize ridership. We also are piloting, or we have piloted, and we are rolling out an attendance process for buses, so we'll be able to tell exactly how full buses are and if we can fit more or different kits on, on the buses. So when I look at our transportation budget, you see that we are 90.9% expended, but that is because we have opened year-long purchase orders for our in-district and out-of-district transportation, both special education in district, special education out of district, and our regular-day transportation. So we did recently add a wheelchair van because we needed to. So we've added a bus, if, a small bus. If we continue to add, these costs could go up, and this could become a line of worry. But for now, it does look like we are making the most of what we have. And so if I had to rank this sort of green, yellow, red in terms of, am I worried about it, I would say it is yellow, just by the nature of it, not by anything else. Next slide, please. So this would be orange, somewhere between yellow and, and red. And this is our students experiencing homelessness. So we have 65 students who are experiencing homelessness who receive daily transportation. We currently have 42 cost shares with other districts. So if a student is being sheltered somewhere else but attending school in Salem or being sheltered in Salem and attending school somewhere else, we split the cost of transporting that student to and from Salem with the other district. So there are two reasons why I would say that I'm a little more worried about the rapid growth in our students experiencing homelessness and foster care. And that is, well, I guess three. One is our population is higher this year than it was last year, and it was higher last year than it had been the previous year, and so on, so it's trending upward. The second is, we, our costs here have been offset in the last couple of years by the emergency shelter funding from the state, and we no longer have an emergency shelter, and we no longer have emergency shelter funding. So our, our costs will be higher. And the last thing that gives me some pause about this is, is also built in to the, you know, the fact of transporting students who are experiencing homelessness, is we don't know when cost shares are coming. We sometimes don't know until the other district sends us a bill saying, hey, you need to split this with us. It's the right thing to do, we're glad to do it. It's just hard to plan for when, when that happens. So we are not yet in a place where we are thinking about large transfers of money needed into this line item, but I would not be surprised if later in the year, we need to think about how we can shift funds around to, to this line.
I think this is an important point because last, I mean, there was almost, there were incentives for having a migrant shelter because we were getting additional funds for kids that were not part of the October 1 census from the year before. Now, we still have just as many, if not more homeless students than we did before, yet because they don't live in a settlement, like a, you know, a dedicated site, we don't get the same level of additional funding, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me, or to many districts, right? And so there were advantages to having the Bates Complex. Now, we just have students scattered throughout the city or living in other, other places. Many of the kids who were at the Bates Complex are now these homeless students who we're cost-sharing for, which we're hap, again, happy to do. We want them to stay in our system, but there's, you know, a rising cost where we don't get direct, you know, we're not getting the same level of reimbursement or funding, which is ma, which makes it challenging. And to Elizabeth's point, this is impossible to predict. It is impossible to predict, and I, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be interesting to watch, you know, post-election, you know, and to see some of the dynamics related to unhoused students, what's going to happen. But we're seeing, the numbers just continue to rise. But we're seeing, the numbers just continue to rise for us and other districts like ours. So this will be something we need to watch, and I do worry that we, again, we think we've budgeted enough, but, you know, there were a lot of unknowns at the time we submit our budget that, and there are many unknowns right now about what the rest of the year will look like for families. But there are, continue to be a lot of families who are losing their housing, who really do want to stay in Salem, and we want them to stay in Salem. So again, we're happy to cost-share. Unless it doesn't make sense at all for them to be transported back to here, like if they're too far away, we really do want them to continue to stay with us. But this is something, as a committee in a district, we have to watch carefully.
Can I ask a question about this? So, if one of those students from the Bates site had been moved to another EA shelter site in a different community and is still attending Salem, there's a reimbursement from the state going to the other district? Or is there, because if they're in a scattered site, then it's, then it, there's, it's on us, but there's no reimbursement even if they're in another EA shelter facility?
No, because that student would be living, that student would still be attending school here. It's, the districts that, the only districts that are getting that reimbursement or funding are districts that have a site, and those kids are actually attending that, the district.
Right, but I guess my question is, if that student is in another EA shelter site, like a hotel in Lynn, for example, and attending school in Salem, the state's not providing a reimbursement to anybody for that?
No.
Okay, thanks.
No.
Now, we did this year use, some of our offsets were the, you know, what we had for our emergency shelter funding. So we were able to offset some of our spending this year. This will be an issue for next year, assuming that we continue to see rising numbers of students experiencing homelessness. Okay, next slide, please. So, utilities is another one that we often talk about here, and this one is, I think, can be very interesting this year. We had a lot of very hot days this summer, and unusually hot days for an unusually long time, so we used more electricity. We ran the air conditioning 24 hours a day because it was a health risk for children. And in all of these things, we're prioritizing our student needs first. So, we did use more electricity this summer. However, we also spent a lot of time, and we have a strong partnership with the city where we have been weatherizing and replacing light bulbs and taking steps to reduce our energy consumption. So that should yield some savings, even with our more robust use of air conditioning this summer. We also have recently learned that there'll be an increased cost in supply for our electricity. That will be about $35,000. The offsets from our lighting upgrades and our weatherization should be able to absorb that, so it should be okay. And we did budget for a planned rate increase that was coming in the second half of the year. So, in this particular case, we have opened purchase orders only for half the year. So the reason this looks like it's half-spent is because we estimated what it was going to cost us. We opened a half-year purchase order, and so that's, when it looks like we're about 50% spent, that's why. So this will be one to monitor closely. We still have challenges at the high school in particular around our controls of our HVAC systems, but I think the new boilers at Bates, the new controls at Witchcraft, and the other investments we've made, we should begin to see us having some literal more control over our utility bills.
Can I ask a question? So the rate increases that are coming for the second part of the year, do you know what those new rates are, or are you just anticipating an increase?
I do know what those new rates are, but I forget.
You don't have to tell me.
This was part of the city's new fixed rate that we, after three years of, I think it's like 13 cents per kilowatt hour, up from nine cents is what I think they are, but I will confirm that. Okay, next slide, please. So, just some things we'll be looking at, and just some big things that are coming. The cost of the retro payment, which is the difference for anyone covered by a collective bargaining agreement that we settled on September 1, it'll be six payrolls and the difference between their old salary and new salary. So we estimate that to be about $500,000. We still believe that we will be on track with our personnel, even with the retro and then shifting to the new rates. We are going to continue to prioritize student needs, as we did this summer with making sure that our buildings were safe to be in because they were cool enough. We know we're going to have to add a new teacher in the early childhood space. We recently added the wheelchair van, so as those costs come up, as they do, we'll be guided by what our students need.
Yeah, we are, we're looking to add a transitional kindergarten classroom. We've had some students struggling to make the adjustment from, well, adjustment from really never going to school to coming to school in kindergarten. And so, we feel like it's a worthy investment to open up a classroom, likely will be at Witchcraft School, to support students who are struggling with the transition to kindergarten. Salem, at different points, has had this class, had a transitional classroom. And while many of our kids are coming to us who have already been in school, many of them in the Salem public schools, there are still some students who are finding their way to school for the first time, and the differences could not be more acute than ever before because we have some kids that are, many of, the majority of our students have been in a quality pre-K seat, and then some, through no fault of their own, you know, they may have been new to the community, they, the parents didn't get information of all the offerings. So we feel that we're going to try to open as soon as possible, but with a smaller classroom setting so we can help kids learn how to do school before we start putting more academic demands on them. And so, just, that's an example of, like, we do have to adjust, depending on what we see as the needs in front of us, you know, at a given time. So, back to you.
And then, the unknowns. There were provisions in our new collective bargaining agreements around substitute coverage and coverage for leaves, family, parental leave specifically, that we don't really, because we haven't done it this way before, we don't really know what that's going to cost, so we're monitoring that. And we'll have a better picture next year. You know, we estimated 20 parental leaves in a year. I think we're at 10 or 11. So, we'll see. We'll see how that plays out. But there will be cost implications for that, partly because we've increased our substitute rate. And we are fortunate, we have hired back a number of retired teachers to service long-term subs, so we're very pleased with that. They are paid at a higher rate. They are paid at the rate that they retired at. So, all to the good, but a little bit of a question mark in terms of what the total cost of some of the new provisions will be. We are hopeful on the savings that we will yield from our utility costs. We just turned on the heat at about the same time as we did last year or so, mid-October. So we'll see. We have, you know, we will be receiving the October bills now, and so we will see how that plays out. And of course, just students moving in who may need additional services, which we will be glad to provide. So if we need to, we may institute a spending freeze in early spring while we make sure we have enough to meet student needs and get through the end of the year. It is too soon to say if that will be the case. Our plan is, in January, when we look at the transfers that we know we have to make, the year-long purchase orders that we opened, to take a minute of pause, not a spending freeze, but a minute of pause and look and see what we can free up from purchase orders that we overestimated, what our bills are really looking like. And that'll give us a better picture of whether we will need to do a spending freeze.
Member Cruz has a question.
Oh.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Elizabeth, for the, some of these updates here. Question regarding the sub-pay rate for retired teachers. I know I had brought this up at a previous meeting when this first came up at bargaining, and we were talking about clarifying this for the public. Could you shed any light on how we've communicated that to retired educators? Is that something that we've done together with STU? How are we keeping in touch with those folks to let them know about these opportunities for subbing? Just want to hear more about that.
I think that we have not had an intentional strategy with the STU, although we would be delighted to. We, I think, actually, given the difference in the numbers between retired teachers who have been hired back to sub this year compared to previous years, my guess, and it's only a guess, is, in fact, Member Cruz, your sort of talking about it as part of the negotiations in a public forum actually really helped to, you know, catch at least a handful of people's attention, because we went from having one long-term sub to, I think we have four or five now who are retired teachers. So, that may have just been an early boost, and we should do more, but that is my theory.
Thank you. And I think Dr. Schreik, to the extent possible, if we can work with President Berman, I know we all talked about doing it, and I, there's definitely been a lot of public communication about what's been in the contract, but I think between our two respective lists that we may have of retirees and addresses and contacts, we might be able to get out direct information about those available sub positions. So, you know, I would just encourage you, Dr. Schreik, to work with President Berman to think about how we can communicate together around that, because the need will only go up as folks go out on leaves.
I'm happy to work with President Berman to do so.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Thanks, Member Manning.
I just want to echo what he's saying because I know we brought this up earlier and like that we really need to publicize this. And I know we have done some, I think, but as somebody who sort of hangs around with retired people sometimes, I've run into some folks who have no idea this is a possibility. They haven't really heard of it. And I'm not sitting here with an answer on how we tell them, other than I keep hanging around with retired people, but it's, there has to be a more systematic way maybe to get the word out, because it is, you know, piquing people's interest. And as you said, the year, as the year goes on, we're going to need more. But a couple of people that I've talked to lately were like shocked and amazed and like interested, so.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next slide, please. So, even as we're closely watching this year's budget, we are planning for next year's budget. And so, I will be reaching out to the Chair of the Finance Subcommittee to put some plans in place for our FY '26 process. But right now, there are just a lot of unknowns. Not happily, happily, we do know for most of our employees what their salaries will be next year, but there is some uncertainty at the federal level with what federal funding may look like next year. It's too soon to know our Chapter 70 for next year, and so right now, what we're doing is just taking a hard look at all of our likely personnel costs, all of our likely non-personnel costs, and trying to put those together. At the same time, we plan later this month to roll out some, a process with principals and department heads to begin thinking about, based on what they're seeing this year, based on our goals and our strategic plan, what is the data telling them about their priorities for things they need to keep next year and things they may need to cut for next year? So we expect the budget process to begin in earnest in the, early in the new year.
Yeah, one bit of good news is our enrollment is up by 21 students. You know, we weren't sure going into this year because of the settlement at the Bates complex and kids moving out, but our enrollment is up again for the third year in a row or fourth year in a row. So I think we certified October 1 at 3832, and we were at 3811, or 3,811 last year at this time. So that is good news, you know, we're not backsliding on enrollment, which, you know, we could, every additional student is an advantage to our, to our funding. So that is good news, but we do know we're going into a very challenging budget season. Not, you know, obviously, we have to, we need to pay for very deserved raises for our staff, but the fiscal climate at the state and then again, the federal level is very unknown to all of us right now. So there's, it's going to be a busy winter and spring as we, you know, as we try to figure out how to balance this budget for next year.
If there's any questions? Any other questions for members about budget update? Not move to the MSBA update?
So, I think the MSB update I gave, that there are, that there's a visioning, our building meeting for Thursday is now a visioning session from 5:30 to 8:30. We've invited some additional people to be part of the vision conversation. We actually invited some real-life educators to join us as part of that, some additional educators. But it is open to the public, 5:30 to 8:30 on Thursday night at Salem High School. And then, in the packet, there is the flyer for the community meetings to learn about the project. I had a chance to present with Nate Bryant, the co-chair of the Building Committee to the Salem Partnership on Friday, and we will now, you know, continue to have these community meetings where we're going to share information and collect input from the community, and you all have a copy of that flyer here. We'll continue to blast it out to families. So right after Thanksgiving, before the holiday break, the winter break, will be, there'll be a lot of discussion about this building project. So, I think Finance and Operations update, you just heard that, unless you have some operational items?
I do not.
Okay. And the last item for me is the Salt and Stall Middle School grade recommendation. I'll just say, I did try to provide some information requested by the committee at the last meeting. I worked with Principal Jellison and Principal Softek to draft a transition plan for Salt and Stall students that was requested, at least a draft of it. I mean, the subject to change, but it came with the input of our school leaders. I had you all ask questions about transportation and the number of students that were transported, that would be transported next year based on where they live to Collins. So we shared that information, and then also provided a memo today with the help of Principal Softek and members of his team around how the school tries to create a smaller, a sense of community, a sense of belonging here, sense of connection, some of the structures and systems that they have in place to do so. And, you know, that would be part of our messaging to families of how we try to replicate, not replicate, but create a smaller school feel in a larger middle school context. So you have those. I sent those under a separate cover today. I hope that, you know, will inform your decision whether you make a decision tonight or whether you choose to make a decision down the road. So that concludes my comments, Mayor.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda are Subcommittee reports. I don't know if there are any reports in Subcommittee's, Finance, Building and Grounds. Oh, yep, Policy.
We just wanted to update the rest of the committee about what we've been talking about at Policies. There's nothing to vote on or make a decision about, but I just want to give everybody a heads-up. The next time we meet, we will be asking you to vote on changing the way that we manage our policies. So fortunately, our amazing executive administrative assistant, Shelly Derai, gave us this very good advice, which is that we can have Mass Association of School Committees host our policies. We had somebody from Mass Association of School Committees come in and talk to us about how that looks. Some of the benefits are that it is way easier to search, which is, it's essentially impossible to search through our policies right now. We can use the MASC to effectively cross-reference them with Mass General Law, which is really helpful. One of the things that I really like is that I think our policies will be available to other districts to use. So I use other schools' districts, I, you know, we find them and steal language from them all the time. And so if it's hosted in MASC, other districts will be able to see our policies, and I think we do really great work around equity and inclusion, and our policies reflect that. So I'd really like for us to, you know, be a model in that regard. So it's not on the agenda for today, but it will come up in our next meeting, and we'll give more details about pricing and scheduling and how that all looks. The second conversation that we had, which we wanted to bring to everybody's attention, a future Salem Public School parent with a couple of little ones not yet in Salem public schools asked us if we would engage in a conversation about changing the kindergarten start dates. And we had a really great exchange about that, but what came out of it was that And we had a really great exchange about that, but what came out of it was that we are recommending that we have a larger conversation among the group about the model at Carlton with the three, you know, entry points for kindergarten and how, you know, what the benefits might be of replicating that in other schools throughout the district. So our recommendation is that we get some representative from Salts, or from Carlton, and, you know, Principal Jellison's experience there. And, you know, we've named a couple of other people who might be good reference points for us to really think about how we can, you know, frankly, I think it would be more equitable if we had all of our schools doing the same thing, everybody had the same opportunities. So that's sort of the decision that we came up with, though, is that we'd like to explore this as a group.
I believe Member Cruz has an update from the Personnel Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mayor. And this past Friday, the Subcommittee met in executive session, and I guess what I'd just like to report out is that we did receive notice as a committee that our partners in the Salem Administrators Union would like to begin bargaining. So I just wanted to provide members of the committee with an update that we did receive that request, and we had our first strategy session related to the negotiations. Our intention is to respond to the request with some dates, or at least a date in December so that we can begin conversations for scheduling future sessions. But just wanted to provide that update to members of the committee, and the Superintendent will be reaching out to representatives from the Salem Administrators Union to begin those conversations and figuring out the logistics.
Thank you very much. There's no further Committee Reports. To motions and resolutions. Our first item under motions and resolutions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yep.
Go. Yeah. I'm planning to put forth the motion that we do close the middle school grades at Salt and Stall. Before I do that, I want to explain why. I don't normally, you know, make a written statement, but I think in something like this, I remember did this at the Bowditch, and I think the closing of Salt and Stall Middle School is equally as important in many ways. And so, so before I do make the motion, I want to explain my rationale. I think that that's only fair. I think the Superintendent has discussed on different occasions that the resources that middle school students need can be much more effectively provided to the students in one setting. So I'm not going to go over too much of that. I think that that has been talked about at the parent forums and at meetings here and among us. So I just agree with that, and I'll put that out as one issue. I want to acknowledge how the students responded and felt on the surveys that they were given. I think that a lot of the students responded that they wanted the move, that they thought it would be a good move. We had some students who basically did not really care either way and were kind enough to respond and say that so that we had that as a response, and I understand that. Then there are students who are nervous but willing, and then there are a few students who spoke against it. But I think overall, I think, I think students are basically in favor of it to some degree, different degrees. And I think the parent responses to similar, were similar. Some wanted to move, some didn't care, some were nervous but willing, some absolutely against it, but I think almost in the same proportions as the students. What I need to, to explain to the parents is what I said to the Bowditch parents when, when we voted to close Bowditch. Even though it's not the exact same situation, it is similar in that the school that you are upset about and angry about and basically mourning as a loss, isn't the school operating today? Those school, those days are gone at that school. That school that you're remembering basically is, is gone as a school, not as a building, but the spirit, the culture, the ethos, I guess is a good way to put it, of that K-8 building is no longer there. It's been lost along the way through nothing specific, and certainly no one person's or no group of people's fault, but it is not there anymore. Salt and Stall parents back in '94, when, when we opened the K-8, or K-2, five at the time, knew they were sacrificing experiences for other experiences. They sacrificed a varied art curriculum for violin lessons. They sacrificed home ec and technology education for Friday Club. They sacrificed intensive special ed services, ELL services, free and reduced lunch programs, all for a more focused demographic profile than the rest of the system. Some students and staff then went through phases. For example, they wanted band. They didn't have a band, they wanted a band. But then they had their own band, but it was a small band. So then they wanted a bigger band, but then that didn't make sense because it couldn't get any bigger because they didn't have any more students. And these are just examples of some of the things that people went through that I, that I remember. So then they had the small band, and they just waited to improve the, the band quality as opposed to the numbers. Memories of these things blur sometimes. The list of firsts and onlys and specials that you heard a couple of weeks ago about, about Salt and Stall was actually quite incorrect, among other things. Salt and Stall did not start Odyssey the Mind. They did not start Destination Imagination. They did not start National Honor. They did not start a drama club. Those were all started as Collins. So those are examples of programs, among others, started at Collins, and they're still at Collins. The programs and clubs and activities that are waiting to now welcome both the enthusiasm and the participation of Salt and Stall students and of Salt and Stall parents. I'm going to make a motion to move grades six, seven, and eight from Salts to Collins and therefore provide for our middle school students in one building, a building with small school communities within one large building. Large enough in resources to provide individual education, social and emotional needs, but small enough in community to provide comfort, nurturing, caring, but also new friends, expanded curricular offerings, and leadership opportunities. My motion is also recommend that we close the three grades at once. Reasoning? Not keeping students there another year knowing they will ultimately be moving. Not splitting siblings unnecessarily. Not splitting parents' involvement unnecessarily. Allowing more focused staff movement. This is just as stressful for staff as it is for students and parents, and I, I think a one move for staff will be much more beneficial than stringing that out. And there is a strong parent response that I see out there to make it a one-time move. So at this point, I'm going to make the motion, and we can, I guess, open the discussion, but I'm going to make the motion that we do move the middle school grades from Salt and Stall to Collins, and that we do that in one move this coming year.
Second.
All right. Move by Member Manning, seconded by Member Cornell, under discussion. Member Cornell?
I just want to explain my, my rationale. It's quick. I just want to sort of explain myself. I've been very involved with conversations with teachers and students and Principal Jellison over the past year or so, and just based on the feedback that we've received both in person and in writing, the teacher's perspective is really the most compelling for me. They are overwhelmingly in favor of moving students from Salt and Stall to Collins and also to doing it quickly. So that is incredibly compelling for me, as are conversations that we've had about equity and access. So in light of those two things, I think this is the right decision for kids, and I think it's the right thing to do it quickly. Two things I do want to underscore first, I think this is a worry or a concern of some people, this is not a budgetary decision at all. We have, I, what we do know is that there's no massive cost savings here, okay? Most of our personnel stay, our students come over here, services come with them. This, this doesn't save the district money, so that's not part of our consideration around this at all. The thing that we're thinking about is what's best for kids and what's best for our school community. And then the second thing, because this comes up a lot, is that class sizes are not bigger at Collins. So I just want to reiterate that for people. There is no, that's not a thing. And so the last thing I just want to say is I've, I've actually thought a lot about whether or not to transition, to vote to transition students all at once or to phase them out slowly. And based on parent and student feedback, I have actually changed my mind. So I, I did think that a phase-out was the right decision, but then based on what the kids said and what parents said, I realized that, that that's probably much more painful and problematic. So that's why I'm in support of the motion as Member Manning proposed it.
Member Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to echo the sentiments expressed by my colleagues about this decision. I am going to be voting in favor of the motion and for the reasons as follows. I firmly believe that this is a transition that needs to occur all at once. A phased-out approach would not give our students a middle school experience at all for those that would remain at Salt and Stall. I do think, in our experience as a committee, we have never phased out the, the closure of a, of a school or closure of a configuration. We have moved students all at once because we want students to seamlessly transition into the school culture that they are transitioning over to. And so I, I think that that is, in fact, what is best for, for the children. And I do think with the information that we've been provided by the Superintendent, the level of community engagement that we've had, and the data, it's very apparent that students who transition from Salt and Stall's middle school experience to the one at Collins are going to have a greatly enhanced experience. They're going to have access to the high-quality programs, enrichment, their educators are coming with them by and large. And the Collins middle school experience is one that I can personally attest to, not just through my own historical experience as a middle school student, but as someone who has visited many classrooms in Collins, met with students. It's just very clear that we have really transformed, I think, some of the systems at Collins, and it's very clear that students are getting the support that they need to thrive, not just academically, but the social-emotional aspect has always been a strength of the school, and that's continued under the leadership of Principal Softek and the current team there as well. So I think as we have broader conversations about reconfiguration within the district, you know, this is, I think, the, the most important thing that we can do as we think about middle school redesign, is to ensure that all of our students are having an equitable, fair experience that truly prepares them for what will come next, which is high school. And I, I think I've been heartened over the last couple of weeks to hear all of the different ways in which folks are already thoughtfully thinking about the ways in which they will welcome the new Collins families and students into the school community. And that's just a testament to the type of district that we are here in Salem. So I'll be voting in favor of the move and appreciate the Superintendent, the school community at Salt and Stall, the leadership, and the leadership at Collins for coming together to really think about how we would do this thoughtfully.
Any further comment on the motion? So I'll offer, I, you know, I, I feel like we've had a lot of compelling information presented to this committee over the last few meetings around the need for this move. And I, I agree with Member Cornell. I was in a position where initially I thought if we're going to do this, it would be most appropriate to do it in a phased manner, but really have been persuaded, especially by the comments and the feedback from the surveys and the public meetings around the need to kind of do this in, in one year. I do want to really request to the district that there's a, a special attention paid to the seventh graders. We're going to be going through two years of transitions between two different buildings, which is a lot for them to be, to be managing as students, and I think that that deserves some special consideration. And, you know, to the, to the families who responded with concern about this move from the Salt and Stall community, I encourage you to reach out to the Collins families. And I include myself in that as somebody who's been a Collins parent for the last three years until this year, and I will be again next year. You know, a lot of the feedback in the surveys that we heard felt like it was responsive to maybe perceptions of what Collins had been like 10 years ago, and not, that's not the Collins of today. And I, I really encourage you to get to know the Collins middle school sharks and all the educators that are there, and the families and the students who are going through, who have gone through that school more recently, because it is a supportive place, it is a place that really, I think, is doing incredible work for our kids. As Member Manning indicated, in a setting that I think would surprise a lot of people that didn't know what's actually happening in, over the last couple of years in terms of student support and the new approaches that have been taken, not just through the pilot program, but even prior to that, with the attitudes of the building leadership and the approaches of the educators in the classroom. So to those, those students or parents or caregivers who are concerned, reach out. We're all in this together. We're in this to support you, so please consider us resources, you know, as this moves forward. Is there any further comment?
Can I just say, I, I appreciate, you know, all the input here from the committee. I, I also pledge that we will do right by the kids at Salts in the transition. We're going to take, invest the time necessary to make sure it's smooth. They deserve our very best. I'm very confident that Principal Jellison knows her kids and families very, very well, and that Mr. Softek and his team are excited. They're, this is something they're excited to receive, more students. It does bring additional resources, resources and supports, and enriches the community here. And there's a strong relationship between the two schools already, and so we're going to work. You have my promise to the families, to the students, that we will make sure that we, we do this the right way. And what I would just ask is that we get feedback from staff, from students and families if they don't, if they feel like we could be doing something different or better. You know, certainly, I don't pretend that it'll be perfect. There'll be some ups and downs, but, you know, I'll be personally available, we'll all be available to make sure that this is done the right way. And the truth is, I do think this is exciting for the future of the Salem Public Schools, to make sure that all kids have access to, I think, what is an amazing, what will be and, well, what is and what will continue to be, and what will be an amazing middle school experience, that we want to continue to grow in Salem. So I, I know that Collins is incredibly excited to welcome the 140 or 50 students that will be coming over here next year.
I just want to also recognize and thank Dr. Schreik and Principal Jellison and Principal Softek. You know, there was a lot of thoughtfulness that went into this discussion and a lot of information that was presented at the committee's request over the last several meetings around everything from plans for welcoming the students to transportation to the educators that will be impacted. So I want to just extend my gratitude to everybody that helped approach this in a way that was thoughtful and, I think, based on data and a strategic approach to lift up all the kids, so. With that being said, roll call vote on the motion. Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Myself, Dominic, yes. Member Miranda? Apologize. Threw me off.
Yes.
Thank you. That's seven votes in the affirmative. The matter carries. Next item on our agenda is a complaint alleging the school committee acted inconsistent with Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25. Specifically, the complaint alleged that there was a serial deliberation via email between a quorum of the committee regarding a joint statement. First, I'll entertain a motion to refer this matter to legal counsel to respond appropriately.
So moved.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Member Cornell, seconded by Member Campbell. Roll call vote on the motion. Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Abstention.
And myself, yes. And now we'll take up the matter of the statement that was referenced in the complaint. The statement in question reads as follows. "The Salem School Committee denounces in the strongest possible, in the strongest terms possible, the comments made by Congressman Seth Moulton regarding children's athletic participation."
participation. Congressman Moulton's comments with respect to trans and non-binary children do not reflect our values. We want to reassure our LGBTQ+ students that we, as district leaders, will always celebrate your identities, support your dreams and aspirations, and applaud your accomplishments. Neither fear nor political whim will shake our commitment to you." I'll now entertain a motion to affirm that statement.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Too slow, Member Cruz. Motion made by Member Cornell, seconded by Member Manning. Move to a roll call vote. Member Cornell?
Yes.
Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The matter carries. That is all the motions and resolutions. Next item is announcements. Member Miranda?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, you know, and this ties right into the last agenda item, which is, given the concerns that many people in our community have expressed, people in the LGBTQ+ community, immigrant community, and other marginalized groups, under this impending Trump presidency, I'd like to suggest that we discuss and adopt a resolution just reaffirming our commitment to protecting rights and dignity of all residents in Salem at a future meeting.
Thank you, Member Miranda. We can add that to a future agenda. We'll talk, we'll discuss it. Are there any?
Mayor? This is Member Cruz. I just wanted to ask, I wanted to say this under concerns and resolutions, but I wasn't quick enough still. If the superintendent could, I just do think with, this is building off the last two motions, if you could at the next meeting also come back and talk to us about the ways in which the district is empowering educators to manage potential conflicts that might be associated with these particular types of protected classes within our district and how students might be responding to a national election. I've received a spike in communications from colleagues from around the state who are asking if we are seeing an increase in incidents between students that either, you know, use bigoted language or originate from, you know, differences in political beliefs. So I just think it would be super important that we have uniform conversations as educators with our students in our classrooms, how we're addressing classroom management that might be related to, you know, how folks are perceiving the election results and/or, you know, what happens during the transition between one president to another. So I think it's something that we've done in the past when there's been high-profile incidents of either antisemitism, racism, targeting of our LGBTQ+ community. And I just think it's better to be proactive about that type of communication into our schools than to wait for an incident to occur. So that would just be my one request of the superintendent.
Yeah, I mean, we could definitely put something together. I think what I would want to focus most on is, I think what we've seen is there's fear amongst many of our students and staff who care deeply about our students, just in terms of our students who are immigrants and our students in the LGBTQ+ community. And so at this moment, I haven't seen a rise in issues between students at school. I think we happen to be in a pretty values-aligned school district and community. That doesn't mean that that won't happen, but I think where the greatest impact that we've heard, or that I've heard, from our school leaders and staff is that students are scared about, you know, the potential implications of new policies and a different value system around supporting our immigrant students and our LGBTQ students, that I think is something we do need to take very seriously and respond to. So we certainly can come back at the next meeting, Mr. Cruz, and share some of what we plan to do.
Thank you, Superintendent. And I would just remind members of the public that this school committee, over the last four years, actually, the last five years, we affirmed our support for a local ordinance related to ensuring that all of our residents, regardless of immigration status, would get equal access to resources, law enforcement, school district, et cetera. So we did that in the past. And then also that this school committee took a position several years ago on a ballot initiative to uphold the rights of our trans community and non-binary folks to be able to have access to their civil rights when it comes to which facilities they use to go to the restroom. So I just want to name that we have a history of doing that as a committee. And as you think about Dr. Zrych communicating out, I certainly agree with Member Miranda that we should take proactive positions on resolutions, but that we should reshare that information with folks so that they know that at the highest levels of governance and leadership within the district, that we have a track record of supporting our kids and families in that way.
Any other announcements to share?
I will share that on a very different topic. The mobile mayor's office will be at Salem High School on Thursday from 3:00 to 7:00. So if members of the public are looking for the mayor or his staff, we'll be located at Salem High School from 3:00 till 7:00 on Thursday this week. Last item on the agenda?
Motion adjourned.
Seconded.
Motion made by Member Cornell, seconded by Member Campbell. All right. Roll call vote. Member Manning?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Miranda?
Yes.
Member Cruz?
Yes.
Member Hoffman?
Yes.
Member Cornell?
Yes.
And myself, yes. We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.